You mentioned Starburst. We just give them away.
He's part of the four phones, forums running out. All right. Well, it's Ricky. Ben Danner can be on that billboard at the meeting room there too. You should review all that stuff.
Hey, Ben, James, James said he left it going to see the home.
Yeah, they let him out. It's good things, that's all we're talking about, it's good things. Yeah, hey, you didn't work me here the last time.
Look at Sherry, it's like Sherry takes one.
It's been a long time.
I know why you give me that Starburst.
You might be laid out on your steps.
Hey, I just opened it, I'll tell you.
Now, another one?
James' thing now.
He can, he got a cavity.
Oh, he did more years.
I'm doing good.
He dropped the high quality stuff. He had a tooth fixed, he was a complete Starburst.
I thought I seen you down in Ragland when I come over.
Hey, big horse men is they're the best.
Well, they do have big teeth. They get good practice.
You do have big teeth.
That's gonna hurt my feelings.
They got some good blows.
Sure. Say I got big teeth. Friends like this, I don't need any. Last one, friends like this, I don't need any.
Hey, Crystal, I'm called up as far as.
Uh, well, you guys have a packet tonight.
No, I'm called up. I'm called up right now.
Uh, we don't have to talk about that, you know, we, the issue. I've got all that stuff. We'll talk about that.
But I'm called up.
At the moment, well, kind of at the moment. Kind of at the moment, in a way. Kinda sorta maybe until we have a further discussion. How about that? I know you. Yeah, maybe. Yeah, maybe.
Actually, it's like you got big teeth.
What brings you to Otis Road? She's talking about solving. No, the Otis Road. He's in six three six. And he's playing basketball. He's playing with, uh, he plays with Andy. So, like, on travel?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
How about I got the question you have? Cole's in six three three. Okay, Parker and.
I got this girl, so I'm gonna take.
She's great.
Amy, she didn't say that.
She's probably married to her. I'm pretty sure she's. She may have.
I can sign it for you. Check it, signature.
I wore my coat in basketball.
Oh, good.
You're my coach.
Everybody wants to risk it.
Will you, Shirley votes your word?
He treats me like that.
I mean, you all vote for the word. Did you have me like your backpack?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, yes. Yes, you know, I mean, so. Like a list like right.
I know, it's got your name on it. You're the only person in there.
I, Sherry helped us set up here.
Yes, she is, I think that's right.
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm, I'm on you.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, it's six thirty, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. The opening session invocation will be led by Ricky Dodson. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Ben Danner.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank for this great day you give us, Father. And thank you for all the blessings of life that we have every day from you, Father. And obviously, everything we do tonight would be pleasing first and foremost you, Father. And be for the best interest of the children of Oakton County, Father. We thank you for all our staff, everyone that works in our school system, Father. And thank you for washing over and protecting them every day and keeping them safe from harm. I just ask you forgive us more in the name of you, first in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I take a motion for the approval of the minutes for the March eleventh twenty twenty five meeting. Motion by Shirley Myers, seconded by Ricky Dodson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
On the additions or deletions to the proposed agenda, I have an addition to the consent agenda for number twelve Livingston Academy FFA overnight trip to the National Land Judging Contest in El Reno, Oklahoma, four twenty eight twenty twenty five to five two twenty twenty five. Do we have any other additions or deletions? Okay, we'll do the approval of the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting agenda. Motion. I need a motion to add the consent agenda. Motion by Alice Reed, seconded by Ben Danner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approval of the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting agenda. Motion by Ben Danner, seconded by James Claus. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, I want to read the executive action items and the consent agenda items together and then we'll make, get a motion to approve those. Executive action was Livingston Academy FFA overnight trip to FFA State Convention in Glattenburg, three twenty three twenty twenty five through three twenty six twenty twenty five. On the consent agenda, I have one forty one fiscal year twenty five, proposed, I mean, general purpose for school revisions, number seven. I have one forty two fiscal year twenty five consolidated admin revision, number five. One forty two fiscal year twenty five title, one A revision, number five. One forty two fiscal year twenty five title, two A revision, number five. One forty two fiscal year twenty five title, four revision, number five. One forty two fiscal year IDEA part B revision, number five. One forty two fiscal year twenty five IDEA preschool revision, number five. One forty two fiscal year twenty five CTE Perkins Reserve revision, number four. One forty two fiscal year twenty five IDEA preschool revision, number six. One forty two fiscal year IDEA part B revision, number six. One forty two fiscal year twenty five CTE Perkins Basic revision, number four. And Livingston Academy FFA overnight trip to the National Land Judging Contest in El Reno, Oklahoma, four twenty eight twenty five to five two twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion? Motion by James Claus, seconded by Ben Danner. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next we'll move into the new business. First thing on the new business is consider approval of the contract of employment between Dr. Donnie Holman and the Oakton County Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alice Reed, seconded by Shirley Myers. Discussion. Because we'll be spending money on this contract, we will do a roll call vote.
Question. So, we're voting on the contract that was presented to the last meeting?
Yes.
The one we got. In the mail, the one we got.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
So, the only difference in that contract other than the money is it says in it that it automatically puts the director in probation if the schools fall under the score. The current one says the board would have to vote to put the director under probation. That new one says it automatically puts him under probation. Tennessee School Board Association looked at it, they said that was the only difference. Because the old one says the board would have to act to put the director in probation. The new one says it automatically goes into probation if the school scores fall below. Other than the money part, that's the only other difference.
I'm delighted, at least.
Failure to raise scores within the probationary period may result in an action to unilaterally terminate the contract of employment without cause, so. Yeah, may result in.
But the first one says that the board would have to do a probation of the director. The second contract says it automatically starts a probation. TSBA said that that's only difference they're saying in it. I had them look at it.
So, yeah, that must be the only change in there because this one is the one that I pulled that we had gotten.
Same with all the information.
Crystal, that was signed.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, this is the one that we, that we pulled that was signed. And then this one is the one that we pulled. That's the only thing that changed in that was the one thousand and eight to my knowledge, but they're saying that that changed then.
Yeah, the wording of, you know, the original contract said that we would have to, the board would have to enact a probation or not, but the new one says it automatically starts a probation if the school scores fall below certain.
Yeah, go ahead and get that one out there so I can look at, we can look at both of them. Now, what does the board want to do with that? Does, do they want to change it to the board shall enact? Or do you want to leave it as the?
May.
May.
Does that mean the board may?
The board may, you, we can.
That's what I took it as.
Yeah. While she gets those, that's something to think about.
So, we're gonna have to be voting on next month since we were presented a different contract this month? We need to put off till next month and vote on it? Because our packet's got that contract. If we're changing the contract, can we?
Haven't had time to look at it yet.
I don't think we can vote on a contract that's amended to that.
We might have to amend it and just change the wording. Crystal, we know that, that would be a thing. Or keep it as is.
I have a question.
Okay.
How did we come up with a four-year contract?
The four-year contract is the maximum amount of time that you can do according to Tennessee Code Annotated.
I had to sign it all four years.
The last one we signed was for a four-year, so it just sort of rolled over and that's the reason that the only change that, as I told you all in the last one, the only change that, to my knowledge, was the hundred and eight thousand dollars for the compensation.
Is that when you have, Crystal, the same one that was in the packet?
Uh, yes.
This is your?
Uh, yes. Just right. Here is the two, the old one that was signed is right there and then here is the new one. I'm not sure exactly where y'all were looking, but I was gonna.
Goodbye, when he talks about the scores, the new one says if school scores fall, you know, that first one said the board hits up to the board.
Is that something that the board usually discusses before it's voted on though?
Aye.
The length of term?
That's what, that's what we are.
Yes.
And that's what we're doing right now also.
Are you talking about fifteen D in the contract?
Yes, fifteen D.
Yes.
I see where it says on there.
Ben Torres at TSBA said that was, said that the new one said it automatically started a probation and then the old one did and it said it was up to the board.
Yeah, and had to vote of the school board and said that. So, that was the one that was there. But according to that, that's the only thing that changed, according to him?
Yes.
That was the only thing that changed.
Oh, the money in the, and that's the only other change too.
So, then that. As a discussion here, what direction does the board want to? We'll have to take the, um.
I mean, the difference would be this old contract, I think the scores dipped one time and it would already went into probation without the board acting, so, I mean.
It's automatic in the old one, the new one it's not.
No, the old one, the old one, it's up to the board to decide. The new one, it's automatic, so that's something the director own needs to, I mean, I don't know that he's, you know, seeing that part, agrees to that.
How was that changed, Crystal?
I'm, I'm not seeing where it says automatic. It just says may.
Does that mean, because it says may?
Should any school fall below a school of three for two consecutive years, a one-year probationary period shall begin.
Shall, because it says shall in the new one.
Failure to raise scores with the probationary period may result in action to unilaterally terminate the contract of employment for cause. Says may result in that.
Is that the one we have? The one that says may?
Yes.
No, the new one says may.
Shall.
Okay.
The new one says may.
It shall begin, but it says may.
The new one says may.
No, it says.
I think the probationary period shall begin.
The probation shall begin.
But the board has to vote.
But the termination of the contract may result in termination.
But in the current one, we would have had to, when the scores dipped, the board, if they went by the contract, would have done a probation then, but did not.
The old one.
I'm just saying in the new contract, when the scores drop, it, it's not up to the board, it automatically goes into a probation.
It's up to the board on whether they, they cancel the contract.
After the year.
After one year.
After the year probation.
But it's not up to the board, it's not up to the board to start the probation, it begins.
It automatically begins, correct.
It's after a year they can cancel.
Well, but I'm just saying, that's completely different than the current contract. That one word changes it quite a bit.
Have we got the?
When you says the current contract, is that the one that Dr. Holman is under now?
Yes, the signed contract that is currently under.
So, we didn't get the old one. We only got the new one.
Yeah. So, you should have had the old one and the new one last night and then this time I just put out the new one again. But I think right here, I'm gonna read them right for you, just let me look over.
Well, I sent them both to TSBA because it said that, you know, they say they evaluate them for no charge to us. So, I mean, they said that's the only difference.
Did they have a comment about which ones they thought they just evaluated?
They did ask me why we went with a four-year. I think in most school boards probably don't go with four-years.
But they had no opinion about the, uh, probation or whatever.
No, the opinion was we need to know that if we do this new contract, if the scores dip below, we automatically go on to probation.
The probation begins, but then it's up to the board to make an action. To do an action.
Yeah, that is, you're, you're correct. The old one says if enacted by the, by. Yeah, and this new one says it will automatically begin.
The probationary period will, and then if the board makes an action, then it can terminate the contract. It doesn't say we are automatically.
If acted by the board.
No, I didn't, what I said, I just said it automatically makes a probation period. The current one does not. The board has to enact that and then do the other. That's just the, the new one goes ahead.
Which I think it should be automatic.
Yeah.
And it should automatically kick in and.
And then it would be looked at about circumstances itself.
Yeah.
Have we got our evaluation for this year of the school or did?
Yeah, it was in.
This year's.
The director evaluations?
Yeah, everybody has got everything turned in yet, we're still waiting on.
A number for the ones that everybody has turned in so far.
How many not turned in?
I haven't turned one in.
Three maybe? I'm thinking, I'm thinking three is the number I'm guessing for some reason. I'm thinking it was three.
It's three, three people had turned theirs in.
So, we're voting on this contract going off that? We don't even have everybody's right now?
Well, we have every, the first two years that are there, which the number that gave you, the one that's there, we went off, I took into consideration the evaluations that had been turned in. The number for the evaluations that had been turned in was a three point eight six. About a five.
I looked at the email, it said it was a four point.
It's four point three. It was a four, four point three, three, four point three. But that took into consideration everything over the past four years, over the length of his contract.
But is that how we do the evaluations? We average out or do we do the current year? I don't know, I'm just asking how that works.
What I put on the email that I sent you all explaining it was an average over the course of the four years. What, this year we have just one number that went into that evaluation with four point three two.
But your seven out of ten members.
Yes. And if I'm not mistaken, in the contract I said over the course of the term, it was a four point three out of five. Yes, we can hear you. Well, that's, we can hear you. Okay, so we have a motion in a second on that. Does the board want to go ahead and do a vote on that? Or do the motion in a second want to, uh?
Can we repeat what we're doing the motion now and I was, I lost service.
We had a motion in a second for the contract extension. This is the discussion part of it.
I don't care to change my motion if there's a, somebody wants a, a different timeline. But I don't, don't want to.
I, I personally am not opposed to an extension, but I'm not for a four-year extension. If we can consider a twelve-month or maybe a two-year extension, then I'll consider voting for it, but I'm not, not gonna, I personally won't vote for any director going forward with a four-year contract. That's just my.
Oh, oh, we're seeing my motion then.
Will we change? Change it to?
A two-year.
It'll be a two-year extension instead of a four-year extension. And the wording in part D?
Do you want to change that?
Can we vote on a contract that we're changing before next month? Can you just change it in the middle of the meeting? I was, I don't know, I would, we need to put it off till next month.
Well, the one contract was presented to the board, it came in the board packets there. If Dr. Holman's okay with the wording in that and we're just changing it to a two-year instead of a four-year agreement, then there shouldn't be a problem on voting on the new one because it was presented to the board. If we want the wording changed in part D and then that will, we'll have to put it off till next meeting.
Well, then you're talking changing the wording to two-year, I mean, that is changing it too.
Well, that would change the effective dates. It wouldn't change the wording on there, it would just change the effective date.
I have no problem voting. As is, we, the one we received along the two years.
Well, if it is a probationary year, what will happen then? The next year, we'd have to come.
Well, it says the board may take action. The board doesn't have to do anything, it may take action. Is the way the wording goes on that. And my, I, my feeling on this is that the, as I have told you all, the average term of a director of schools for Oakton County has been two years. But since I've got on the board, we've had four different directors. Started with Pamela Smith Gordon, Terry Webb, then we went to Mark Winningham and now we have Dr. Holman. There, there, it was out to be about the average of its two years. If we want lasting change and improvements, we're gonna have to get some continuity in leadership because if you're continually changing the leadership, you're starting back from scratch all the time.
Well, I mean.
Have you not paid for it? I, I just personally think it's been said in the side, I think that is the one that's dead.
I have a question about the, uh, uh, schools falling below a certain level. Is that an average of all schools? You might have one school that have a D, but another school have an A.
It says any school in the thing. I mean, it's not, any school is exactly.
For two years.
Yes. For two consecutive years.
My opinion, past boards probably went off those scores and changed directors because of that. We signed, we had a contract here and we, the board here did not do anything off of the scores for the last four years. I mean, the scores dipped in this one, I'm sure they dipped in the other one, then the board probably done something, you know, changed leadership. That would be my opinion about it.
And if it does go into where, um, this school, you know, on that probation period, who keeps up with it to make sure that it does go into effect?
I think it'd be up to the board to monitor that.
Well, it, it automatically will go into effect. What it is, is if the board decides to take an action. If the board decides, hey, you know, we're gonna terminate this contract, then the board would have to come in here and vote to terminate the contract.
But why have that in contract if, if the, you know, hadn't, that hadn't been done before?
It is in a way.
The, the reason that that whole line right there went into the contract, it first went into the contract with Dr. Mark Winningham when it was in there. And the reason that it went in there is because when we reevaluated the contract, we wanted to put something in there that was close to how new tenure teachers, how that went for them. We wanted the teachers to be able to feel that the director was under the same pressure that they were. If you are a new tenure teacher and you fall below a level three for two years in a row, you lose your tenure. Then you go on a probationary period where you get help trying to change. If you don't change then, then the school system can make the decision to fire you.
But my point is that's in the director's contract and it's not being done. If the school scores drop below and there was nothing done about that, I mean, we're saying we do that to teachers, but we're not holding the director to the same accountability of the teacher.
Well, as it, as it said in the past one and said in this one, the board may take action. Or the other one said the board may vote to play the probationary period.
That's just the teacher not automatically fired, it's left up to the director's call.
William.
Yes.
Can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. My only thing is I really want to hear some opinions before I have to vote on anything from some of the people that have to work directly under any director. I mean, it is a board, we communicate with the director, but at the end of the day, it's our teachers and our principals and our supervisors. You know, they work in the situation and I think it's only fair that we have input from everybody that. I mean, this is a big decision for the students that I'm telling.
I agree with that.
That's just my first thought.
You know, I think there's a lot of consternation among the board members, I just, I, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until the next meeting.
Well, he, here's my opinion, I mean, state law says it has to be the first thing on the agenda, so if we wait till next month, we're gonna be in the same conversation, if we elect to change it, well, we can't vote on it till the following month. So we need to have a work session before the next meeting to hammer out all the details before we come back to the next meeting.
As long as something.
Because if we don't, we're gonna be sitting in the same situation in May saying, okay, well, we changed it, but we're not gonna vote on it till June. So if we're gonna do that, I'm fine with waiting till May, but we need to have a work session between now and the next meeting and hammer out the details.
Which is what we should have done already, and we're where we are right now.
Because the contract says ninety days before, and we never done that. But T, Tennessee School Association said long as, you know, if we took no action, the, the, the contract expires. If we take no action at all, if, as long as we do something before the contract ends, I mean, that, that's fine too.
I think we should have a work session, and I thought we might have one last time between, before it came up.
We need to, because.
We're never really discussing, we could discuss at the work session and get it ironed out.
Like I said, we're gonna be here at May, and somebody has one word change, it's like, well, we can't vote on it, because it's gonna be one word change. So we need to hammer that out in a work session, and we just need to, if that's what y'all wanna do, so.
Yes, I agree.
But, I mean, one word like Shal or Ma is completely different, it makes the contract completely different.
Well, I agree.
I mean, we might not have been sitting here voting on it right now if it would have been that in the last one, because if it went into probation, then the school numbers went down, I mean, we, it may not have been.
Can I make a motion that we have a work session?
Well, we have, Alice has to rescind her motion.
She's gonna rescind her second.
Well, she, she had rescinded it for two years, if she wants to rescind the entire motion, that.
If that pleases the board, yes, I can rescind it.
I'll rescind my second.
Okay, so we'll do that, and then we'll have to have a, um, hot work session in order to discuss this. So we'll have to put that, when do we wanna do that, at the, um?
We can do it at the end of the, the work session today, let's go ahead and start on, I mean, that's just my opinion.
All right.
We can start today, if it's on, we just can't vote on it till next month, so.
All right.
Yeah, we start on the work session today.
All right.
Do you want to engage, uh, make the motion, don't take the witness law?
Yes.
I'm gonna, we table this until the next meeting.
Sorry.
Seconded by Ben Dana.
Why?
Moving to the next meeting. All right, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? All right, we'll start working on that on the work session after this meeting. Next, we'll move to consider approval of the following letters of retirement from Tammy Daly, Melanie Norr, and Carrie Albridge, Aldridge.
Make a motion.
Motion by, who was the motion, James Klaus, seconded by Mike Hayes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Consider approval of the following letters of resignation, uh, Rachel Ramsey, Jessica Bilbury, Josh Carwell, Darlene Buck, Matt Hauser as LA football coach.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Rick Dodson, seconded by Ben Dana, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number four, consider approval of the Overton County Virtual Options through Pearson Education. Everybody received information on that in their, an email from the director of schools? And Brett's gonna give us some more information about it.
And Dr. Homan would ask us to, uh, kinda investigate the possibility of, um, basically restarting a virtual program. And y'all probably know that our district, uh, isn't new to a virtual program, we've had Tech Rep in the past, but, um, as, you know, since the beginning of that program, as time went on, we went through, of course, the pandemic, and the state, through all that, had, um, um, you know, created and put in place a lot of, uh, rules around virtual schools that, uh, we saw that Tech Rep just simply did not, uh, comply with. So, um, we, uh, made the decision to kind of, uh, to change to a different vendor, and then that didn't really work out well because of the, uh, the change, and so we took basically a year away from the virtual program. But as you all, um, you, you may know, uh, that we have a growing homeschool population in our district. We have about six hundred, uh, students approximately, and so, you know, we've, of, of course, as I mentioned, we've served that population in the past with Tech Rep, but we're looking at another way to approach that that is, uh, compliant. We've, uh, talked with Johnson City Schools and talked with, uh, the director, or the, uh, um, tech director there, who oversaw, you know, putting that program into place, and, um, he had a lot of good insight for us to, as to how their program's working. There, in, in three years, uh, they've been using the, uh, Pearson, uh, virtual, uh, program, and, uh, they were very complimentary of the program, very pleased with the results that they're getting out of that program. Um, they had actually, uh, done an in-house, uh, virtual program prior to doing the, a transition to Pearson. So, um, you know, they, they had a lot of confidence in that program. They, uh, they talked really highly about how there's, um, a lot of expectations in the program, and they talked about how, um, it was a good way to meet that need of, um, you know, parents wanting a homeschool option and providing a curriculum that has the high standards that we would expect in a, a brick and mortar school. They, they talked about how the program, um, the licensing for the program was, uh, around, uh, two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars per student is what they paid, um, and so they said roughly that gave us about four thousand dollars per student that could be used, uh, to support the program, uh, with staff and, and, and everything. Um, and so they, um, gave us a lot of good insight, but one of the things that they recommended was that we really start planning and really start thinking about that, about this now rather than in the summer, you know, approaching start school, so we wanted to bring this before the board and, and, you know, ask for your consideration about, uh, kind of restarting this program, and, um, so that way we can work on planning and.
Improving, we can start improving now, and the target group, of course, is that six hundred that we mentioned, six hundred students that are in our, in Overton County that are homeschool, you know, that's who we want.
It's a large group, I mean, that's as much as a school, um, and, you know, it's growing. And so that's something that we want to help the people in the community with by providing, you know, this would be a free option to them. Um, and they would be enrolled under the school that's closest to them, uh, to their home address, so that would give them opportunities to, um, you know, be under that school for, whether it's, you know, participating, uh, their activities in the school, sports events in the school, and also that's where they would go and do their testing, because they would be still accountable for doing state testing, uh, benchmark tests and things like that that we're required to do in, in a regular brick and mortar school.
So, so when they enroll in a particular school, that principal gets notification?
Yeah, that principal would be, um, responsible for kind of, I guess, like the testing side of it. Um, but we would also have, we would, um, through Bridge Academy.
Yeah, we, we're looking at, at, uh, having someone, that someone in the district hired to be over that school to, to deal with all the issues of that, but then, like he was saying, if that child lived in Livingston, then they would, they would go to AAH or the middle school, or, you know, they would be assigned to those schools.
And the testing that they do, like the state, I'm sure that counts toward the particular school's overall grade as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if your homeschool students don't do well at Hillham Elementary, it is included in Hillham Elementary's scores?
Correct. And that's why I ask about the principal getting notified, because they need to know, hey, I've got fifty students that are homeschooled, but those scores affect my overall, and I have no control inside these four walls, or so to speak, so that's my only concern is.
Right.
Does the attendance count also against the particular school?
That is, yeah, it does, well, so the attendance is something that would be monitored closely through this program, that's one of the things that they pointed out, they said, you know, the regular, it's, it's daily participation, it's not weekly, or they don't check in, you know, once a month, it's a daily participation in the program, then if there's, if they're not, then somebody's calling and, you know, engaging with them, and they remove them from the program if they don't continue to participate as the expectation is.
And the, uh, program will also track their performance to make sure that they're making growth and gains that they need to be making.
Hmm, yeah.
And if, if they're not, what's the?
He was saying that the program themselves, they keep them out.
Oh, the program does, okay.
Yeah, and they have licensed Tennessee licensed teachers in the program, Pearson hires in Southern Virginia, and an Overton County schools employee.
How's that work right now, I mean, everybody that's going to Richmond will live in Richmond, everybody going to Hillham will live in Hillham, how's that gonna work putting them into the school, I mean, because they may, if they go to school, they may go to another school, but now that puts them at the one, so it zones them into the school they live at, is that what?
Well, that's just an internal decision that we decided to approach it.
That was something that we've looked at, because we didn't look to have all of elementary stu, we didn't wanna place all of our elementary students at one school, and then it wouldn't really be fair to have them, all elementary students to be tagged to Hillham, for instance. So, so we tried to come here at the office, we tried to look at the way that we could divvy those students out. So we just thought, based on their address, where would they go to school, that way we would know, uh, that way we would attribute those.
Their bus route, as we used to say, that you live on, that bus route that you're school.
I just said we don't go off that for the ripper, is my only.
And I think by state testing, do they not have to come inside the school and do those testing?
Yes.
So that's something internally they'd have to look at too, because you wouldn't wanna extra hundred kids go into Richmond, because you have nowhere to put them for testing that day, so.
Out of the six hundred, how many would, do you think that would participate in this, or percentage?
That's hard to, that's hard to know, but if we, if we participate in this, if you all decide that we wanna go this route, the, the minimum that we have to do is eight, eight licenses, so eight students, that's the, that's the lowest that we can participate in. But hopefully we would have more than that.
Yeah, we, we would, yeah, we're hoping, and we think that's, that would be a, a good turnout. Um, and if we started in the fall and we only had the eight minimum, and, you know, we had fifteen, and, and, uh, the, you know, the winter, you know, for the second semester, we could add more licenses then, if we had more people wanting to join the program.
Would this make more people wanna do that instead of staying at school?
Well, that's not what we want.
I know, but I'm just wondering if it's gonna.
It, it possibly could, but that's sure not our goal, our goal is to target some of those that are out there that, that we could bring back into the school system, we could.
I mean, if you got fifteen that participated, and we got four thousand back, that's sixty thousand, that'd pay for the position there. But I think that particular position, in my opinion, needs to be tasked with recruiting kids back into that program, so. I mean, my personal opinion is I don't wanna sit there and say, okay, well, I got fifteen, I'm on Easy Street. Not saying they would, but I think they need to be tasked with, hey, I've gotta get X amount of numbers of kids back in this program.
We, we had talked about that too, if, if, of course, if it goes so low, there wouldn't, we wouldn't have a, a purpose in having it, you know, we couldn't afford to have it, so to speak, so.
Well, I'll ask you a question, may not know, what is the biggest age group or grade level kids at homeschool?
There, there's a, there's a lot, uh, in, in all the grade levels, but from, from what I see though, I, I would think there's a lot more in high school, that's what I would think. In the Johnson City school system, they, they.
I was just gonna point out, this is the first, uh, opt, first time that we would have an option for the high school. When we were under Tech Rep, it was only.
I thought it was for elementary, like it had been before, so this would take in the high school.
Yeah, this would be. Yeah.
And like I said, we've never had that option before.
I didn't know a lot of high school kids that want work, make money, so they, home, some of them homeschools, so they can work too.
And this would hold them more accountable, is.
Yeah.
And Johnson City Schools, that was one of the, the examples that they gave for the students that were participating in it.
And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Roy, you can answer this, in the CPAC meeting that we went to, the majority of students are in a program that has some accountability there. There are only a couple, um, things like eighty students that their parents have pulled them out and said, I'm assuming all responsibility for this education. The majority of that six hundred students are in a program that does have accountability, that is looking at growth and all of that stuff.
Five hundred, five hundred fifty-nine, I believe.
About a hundred and fifty-nine of those students.
And the Umbrella Schools are one, that's the program that those parents are having to pay for, but this program would be, you know, free to them, uh, an option that's free to them.
So, so with the high school students, if they elected to do classes at TCAT or something, is that something they would work around for them to be able to go to TCAT and do those?
We haven't worked all that out yet, but that is something that in Johnson City Schools, they talked about having, uh, hybrid students, is what they called it, and where.
I think we need to have that flexibility for them to continue down that, yeah.
And after we, once we get the program going and everything, that's things that we can definitely look at and see, it's just gotta start with us either approving or not approving. Like I said, we, we were wanting to mention it to you now, so that, so that we could, uh, do some recruiting of that population, have a little time to do that recruiting.
And you said we had to maintain eight?
Eight, eight is what we have. Eight's the minimum, eight is the minimum, to begin with.
When did John, did, uh, Johnson City Schools have performance data about how these students did?
Yes, they did, and, and they did really, they did well, uh, as a matter of fact, correct me if I'm wrong, Miss Brent, but they're, uh, they're virtual, these students, they were a award school, didn't know what they said?
Uh, yeah.
Which really surprised me.
So they did very well.
But I, I hope they do, if we do this, I hope they do that well here, I hope they do.
But this would eliminate having a different school number like we did before?
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
So Brent, is this something you'd recommend we did, would you endorse it?
I, I think it would be beneficial for the district and for the, you know, the families in the community.
Leslie, do you agree with that?
I do. Do you, the high school, would you have a problem with that, do you think, Leslie?
I think the high school is losing more and more students, because they're looking for that flexible way to take their classes.
They're looking for a flexible.
It's not, it's not, I mean, there are some that want to work, but it's not just those students. I mean, some of them are gonna be doing, going on with the Ball State, some of them are doing it with TCAT, it's those students as well now. So I think, I think there would be several students that would possibly come back.
So this program, I know when they homeschool now, I mean, they can graduate early, if they do all the classes, they need to, they can graduate a year early or more, is this year, or does it keep it like going to high school, I mean, is it might get the same number?
They would have a program to study, from my understanding, similar to, and classes are scheduled, kind of similar to, you know, students at the school, so. Um, but we have students that graduate early, don't we, at the high school?
Because I'm sure they draw all the people, you know, kids in high school go on, they graduate in two and a half years instead of four. You know, that's why they're doing that, I didn't know, I mean, yes, they could still do that too, and.
I know about that, we, uh, we'd have to get into the details on the high school sets, of course, that, that is new to us too, you know, the, the high school part of it, I mean, so.
I know lots of, lots of homeschool children across the whole spectrum, some of their parents are just, just totally disenthegetes to school, but some are so concerned about the curriculum, that's why they're homeschooling. So, um, did they have any say about the class curriculum?
It would be what Pearson offers as far as the curriculum, but I think the advantage there for those parents that are concerned is they have, you know, their eyes are on that all the time, they see what it is, and they can have discussions with their child if there's something that they question, or something that they don't fully agree with, whether it's a religious reason or something like that that they want to address.
Most of those, uh, that I know, know, uh, those students do very well, and I know those others that go to easy peasy homeschooling, so.
And that's really the name of the day.
The answer's really.
But I mean, when, when kids that are sophomores here, that other kids can graduate in two years, so that makes a lot of kids wanna do the homeschooling, I mean, that's.
They, they can still graduate early even after school, so it's not just because they're homeschool, but.
No, but they can graduate when they're a sophomore, can they?
I don't make that early.
That's the kind of.
We have to have a.
But they can.
Very, very.
But I'm just saying, they, you know, when they hear other kids, they might take a decision, that's why they.
All right, do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Seconded by James Klaus, seconded by Mike Hayes, all in favor?
Miss seconded. Miss seconded.
All right.
All right. If we are spending money on this right here for those eight licenses, do we need to clear a road call?
Yes.
Uh, William Epstein?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
No.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Whoa.
And Mitch Stunsacker?
Yes.
Nine four, when opposed, motion passes.
All right, next will be OCEA recognition, Jim Rolliger.
Good evening. I'll have to forgive my casual attire. I took seventy-five second graders through Cumberland Caverns today, so. And then went to McDonald's, Richmond, now. So, anyway, uh, on this eve of our testing, I would like to remind y'all of something I know you already know, but it's a good thing to be reminded of it. Those tests are really important, but they do not measure all the qualities of our students. And they don't measure all the qualities of our schools or our director, although those scores are based on other things. The state of Tennessee wants to sum up a child with a test score, and that's terribly unfair. And I don't want us to fall into that same category. There's so many wonderful things and areas of intelligence that are not measured by that score. That score really measures how good a kid is at taking a test. And to me, it's unfortunate that our schools are tied to that, because I know our teachers feel different. I feel that our administrators feel different and our central office staff. Everybody sees that a child is so much more than a test score. And yet, the state wants us to measure these kids like that. So, just a reminder that no matter, and, and every teacher in Overton County, and I'd say in the state of Tennessee, is pushing just as hard as we can to get those numbers that the state wants us to have. But we want everybody to remember that these kids are so much more than that. That test score is a picture of a few hours of their educational journey. And there's so much more beyond that, so just remember. Thank you.
Do we have any public comments? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Motion by Rick Lawton, seconded by Ben Danner, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we will move into the work session. First thing on the work session is the, um, softball update. I had it out of sheet with, uh, the data that I've just gathered from licensing, so, uh, so I have it here. What we found out, um, this will become a, um, Title IX issue that we'll have to, uh, see about fixing, uh, to make everything equitable. Um, even with a booster club, the school system itself does provide a thousand dollars for both baseball and softball every year. With the booster club on baseball side, they had done a lot of extra work and done some stuff for the field. With Title IX, it falls on the school system to make sure that everything is equitable. So, there will be some improvements that we will have to do on the softball field to make sure that it is equitable between baseball and, uh, softball.
So, this sheet here has estimated costs for everything except lockpoles and dugouts. I know they've mentioned something about a building next to the field house. Can we have a update on that cost too?
And that there are, like we said, there are certain things that we do have to do, like the backstop and different things like that. Um, uh, we're, we're researching it right now to see if we're gonna have to expand dugouts for the cost on that and what we would have to do with any other outbuildings or anything like that. Now, I know with like the, um, batting cages, as long as we can schedule times that softball can use those and base, and times that baseball can use those, we won't have to worry about building separate ones for softball. Those times can be scheduled and we can continue with the, continue seeing what we can schedule and how we need to proceed with that.
I think that's what the document was gonna be used for, so.
Yeah. So, those, that's what we're, we just wanted to give you all an update that there are, there is some work that we're gonna have to do. We're still evaluating on what work we're actually going to have to do, so we will present that to the board at a later time. Any more questions about the softball? All right, we'll move to, um, Overton County Middle School Athletic Rules Adjustment Lesson Athletic Record.
Um, as most of you know, or all of you know, there was a back gathering, opinion gathering, discussion on Tennessee Middle School Athletic Association, whether it was time for Overton County to go into that or not for all our sports. And what came out of that is it's not time. It's not the right thing for our district at this point for, for various reasons. Uh, and if anybody wants to know some of those, I'll share that some other time. But some things that came out of it that I think we can adjust, in my opinion, um, was the transfer rules in basketball. Of course, in our countywide sports, that's irrelevant, cause everybody plays on the same team. But with the basketball, we've, NCAA has caused this problem with their transfer portal, and then now T double S double A has jumped on board. And I think if we can get ahead of this, maybe at the middle school level, maybe we can slow it down a little bit. It's already happening. But right now, um, basically, our rules are if you go to camp with one team, you can't play at the other school the next year. That's basically it. Or if you move in the middle of the year, school year, the director of schools has to allow you to transfer, but you still can't play basketball. That's really all we have in place. So, I've done some research with some other districts that aren't Tennessee Middle School Athletic Association, and I've looked at the TMSAA and looked at some of the situations we have going on in our district. And in your folder, you have a list of a lot of things, but most of it's already in place. So, um, if you look at the second bullet, and this one falls kind of in our new virtual school situation. Um, it says, "Overton County Student Athlete May Not Participate in Basketball in a Middle School in Which They Are Not Enrolled." And this includes homeschool students. The reason we put that in there was because we feel like that might pull some of those homes, those middle school students back, back to our Overton County schools. Now, if they wanna cut back into the physical school, that's great. But now that we're gonna have this virtual option, there's really no reason for them not to do that. So, I think, I think that bullet, in my opinion, is easy for us. It wasn't gonna be easy, if you guys have voted down the virtual thing. But I think now it might be a pretty easy change for us, um.
So, now, but now, though, they get to go, they can play basketball, but you're saying we're changing where they can unless they enroll in that school.
Correct. And, and the current homeschool rule is very lenient. Um, the current homeschool rule says if you are homeschooled and living over in County, you can play basketball in Overton County, which means you can play anywhere you want. So, you can live wherever you want, play anywhere you want. So, kids are going wherever they want to. Uh, and they're changing from year to year sometimes. And that's not just homeschool students, but that's.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I know that's the way the regular schools.
Yeah. Um, so it would, it would tie that homeschool student, if they're in our virtual program, to that homeschool, which might not be a popular thing. Um, but we're tying them for other reasons, so we thought that that'd be a good way to tie them for athletics as well. So, that's something to discuss, I suppose.
And, and I may misunderstood it, but, so if they're not enrolled in a school or the homeschool, they can't play?
Correct. That's what I'm proposing.
So, so the question would be for countywide, baseball, foot, same thing, they have to be enrolled, okay?
I think so. We have, we have almost forty right now, middle school student athletes that are not in our schools.
But how many of them live in the area that the school they're playing in now? You know, the one, the one I'm getting at either, I mean, we don't, the only thing, any kid can go to any school, they won't be in Overton County, I'm just, I live here. But we're saying if you homeschool, you can only go to the, for sports, to the one you live at. That's my, that's my only problem with that virtual, cause, I mean, I hate to tell them, you know, if they're homeschool, they can't do that, but they can anyway.
And I think to her point, it may, if I wanna go to Allen's, then, hey, I need to enroll in Allen's, you know, and go to that physical school, you know?
But that's not the way it is now with homeschool.
Not now, but with the proposal, they won't be able to play at all unless they're enrolled in their program.
Yeah, this would still be here if you had voted this down. I would've still said, I don't.
But if I live in Wilson and I wanna play basketball at Allen's, and I'm in homeschool in the new program tied to Wilson, I can only play at Wilson. Well, I mean, if they wanna move to Allen's, let them go to Allen's every day and play basketball there. I mean, that, that's correct, right?
Yes, that would be.
I mean, but now they can do that and they can drive them every day.
They can now, if we change that, they will be.
No, I'm saying if they live at Wilson, they can still drive to Allen's and enroll in Allen's. But if you make them homeschool, they can only play at Wilson only.
That's correct, but.
They'd have to be physically there, though.
But if they, they can still go to Allen's, but they just have to go there to school every day instead of homeschool.
If they don't do this and they're homeschool, they're not gonna play either.
Unless they enroll.
That's allowing you.
Unless they enforce them to do that.
They can do our virtual program, the new one. So, that's, and these are just proposals, we can, um, the second one there, we had a situation this year where some, or last year, where some students tried out at one school, made a team, transferred to another school in the fall, made that team. And what hap, what happened at the, at school A was the coach chose these five players. They went to another school, how many kids did he have to cut that didn't make the team that could've been on the team? So, then he has to have another tryout. So, I'm proposing this, if you've tried out and made a team at a school, you can't try out at another school for a year. You know, you have to, you have to wait a year. You better play at the school you're trying out at, because you're putting that, that school in a bad situation. Um, we already have in place that if you participate in a summer camp with school A, you cannot play at school B. But this would say if you've made the team at school A, you cannot play at school B.
Let me get this straight, since I got in. An argument about this last year that I asked you. If you went to the school camp at LMS, okay? You cannot transfer to another school and play basketball for that year?
Correct. That's current.
So, I go to LMS to the stu, school camp, and I do great, but I now wanna go to Richmond and play ball. That's a no-no.
That's a current rule. That's already in place. That's already in.
That's what came up last time. Okay, all right.
So, this is saying you don't even have to go to camp, you just try out. You go to one of the tryouts in the spring, you've made the team and you can't change.
What if you don't go to summer camp, Leslie? I mean, this says a student who attended summer camp, say I didn't go to summer camp, but I wanna go ball, then I can go wherever I live or go to school.
Well, if I'm eligible for summer camp, I've already made the team at tryouts. So, I'm already tied.
To be eligible.
I'm already tied.
Gotcha.
Um, so that was the third bullet there. The fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth bullets are current rules. They're already current rules for what we already have. I don't know if y'all are familiar with the athletic policy we have, but those are already there. The last one, um, is a little different, and I've got this talking to other coaches and other parents. Um, a student athlete may have an athletic record or be on the roster at school A and make a legal transfer to school B to play basketball within his or her middle school career. One time. There could be a situation that that parent says, I do not want my child playing at that school. I think we should allow that one time under the rules. But these students, athletes that jump from school to school to school to school, I'm, I'm opposed to that. I think we allow it one time. If they decide to do it a second time, they need to lose a year of eligibility. And that's what a lot of other districts do. That's what TMSAA says. That's what they're doing now with high school and T double S double A. So, um, that's, again, this is all just proposals. And then, of course, there at the bottom, there's three exceptions that I think are pretty easy to understand. You know, change of residence, a death in the family, or, um, guardianship change, custodial thing. So, I think those things can be exceptions, and they're all under the, um, decision of the director to allow that student to transfer schools under those circumstances. But if the director allows a student to transfer under those three circumstances, then they should be allowed to play basketball.
So, are all these changes making us more like that Tennessee Middle School Association?
They are. They are.
So, I mean, we weren't for doing that, but we're talking about changing.
But I think most of this addresses the whole transfer issue. It's become a major problem over the past few years, uh, where there was some other cons on the TMSAA.
There were.
That, that really kind of.
Yeah, if you're talking about those them schools, then nobody's for that.
There's pros. There's pros for it too. Uh, but the cons outweighed for Overton County.
So, when do the schools have their first tryout?
Usually, some of them April, um, April and.
So, so here's, and this, it may address it, and I'm just overlooking it. So, if I'm a student at LMS and I try out April and I don't make it, then I decide to transfer to Allen's and try out with this new group in August, am I still good?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I, I don't have this in here. I would like that student to be able to try out at Allen's in May.
If I have two tryouts at Allen's, I would like that student to be able, I mean, the more they get to play, the better. I'm all about team sports. I'm all about sports. Um, right now, they cannot try out at a school they're not enrolled in. That's not in here. I'd love to add it. But I, um, I don't want them to have to wait till the fall or till this summer.
Well, the thing about that too is I don't make it in April, and I make a decision over the summer to go to Allen's, and I get there. Hypothetically, I don't make it there, but I don't like going to school there. So, now I wanna go back to LMS. So, that may eliminate
I have it.
some of the back and forth twos. I mean, that may be something to put in there too.
I think it's worth got to change the address. I mean, is that still going off one transfer? Because I can see people probably changing that. Cause now, no matter if you change address or not, you can't play at another school, correct? If you move in the middle of the ball year and move to Livingston from Hillland, you can't play at Livingston right now.
Yes, you can.
You can.
If the director decides that it's a legitimate transfer because of your residence, you can't, if he, if, yes.
I thought you could change it to middle of the year.
A change of residence is.
If, if they change houses, they can.
Okay.
We're pretty tight on that.
There, someone even proposed that we have all the tryouts within the same week. Every school had their trials at the same time, not the same day, obviously. Have them the same week. So, kid can try out at all five schools if they want. You know, but once I make one, I can't try it anywhere else. So, you better choose wisely.
So, once you make it, you can't change the address and play.
That'd be up to the director.
I mean, I, I think it's up to the director to find out if it's a legitimate address change, a le, a legitimate reason why, you know, there, I mean, is it a safety issue for the child or whatever, you know? And I mean, that, you're always gonna run into those issues. It's gonna be kind of a discretionary type situation.
And that's something TMSAA would handle for us.
I could say, look like that issue at school would maybe another child or something, and they change schools, just with that.
That's not one of the exceptions.
But if they cha, move.
If they move, it's exceptional. That, and this is, that, those three exceptions are proposals. Those are not in anything old. Those are brand new.
But, okay, that's what, oh, and we're not doing that right now.
We are not, no.
I thought you were saying right now, you can move and still.
If they change residents, I think he would allow them. We haven't had that. We, we haven't had that situation. Right now, if a, if a student transfers within the school year, it's the director's decision to allow them to transfer, transfer. I would think it would be up to him, maybe with my input, if there's a reason that that could.
I know, like, it's core order to go with other, you know, parents, so I can, I understand that, but. I just, I thought you were saying right now, it's in there with it, that's a new, you're telling me to add that in at the bottom.
Yeah. None of those have ever been written out before, yeah.
Is this something we gotta approve?
Not really. I mean, I would like input, um, not necessarily right this second. But once these kids start trying out, and there's tryouts posted right now on Facebook, I think they need to know the consequences.
So, is there a board policy that says that the homeschool kids can, uh, try out anywhere, or is it just something that we're doing, or is that a natural policy that is?
It's not board policy. It's just a, the middle school athletic policy is what it's called. No, but it's not policy. It's just.
Cause that would be changed in, cause now it says they could.
It would be changed in. There's not a transfer section in it. And that's a huge part of TMSAA, transfer.
Let me ask you, let's say, I mean, you wrote this up here, like, you like this. This is what you-
I do like this.
Well, that's what we've heard you to do, so, you know, that's your job, and I can wish we support you, if that's what you want. I appreciate that.
Everybody's looking at a good job.
We're doing a great job. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, concerns? Do we need to discuss, do some of us need to discuss the virtual school thing again, about having to play at that homeschool? Is that something you'd like us to look at?
Personally, I would like to. I know that this right here is eliminating the homeschool, but I feel that there's some kids out there that they should still get to play. That's my opinion on there, is that they should still get to play, even if they are homeschool, because, I mean, I understand that some people are against that and everything, but, you know, when we're looking at taking care of kids in a whole, but even if they are homeschool, they're still something that we have to look at.
You mean not in a pro- in a virtual program?
Even if they're not in a virtual program.
Any homes, any homeschooler out there could play ball?
I mean, T- T- L- S- L- A says they can, I mean, we can't change that. But the middle school doesn't say you have to. I, I personally think it's a benefit for them to come into our virtual program to be able to play. And, and, and I think that's just a positive. I mean, if they really wanna play, then they should come to our school or be enrolled in our program. I mean, that's my opinion of it.
I agree, because I think it makes them more accountable, because I know homeschool elementary students that have come to play ball, that we didn't hold them accountable, because we hold our own students accountable, they have to be there the next day. If there's a ball game and that type of stuff, and those homeschool kids can sleep till noon.
I mean, I, I think it's a benefit for those that wanna enroll in our programs.
And, I mean, I would like to see that too, and then, but if we already have kids that are playing that are from a homeschool program, we're just gonna say, "Hey, sorry, you've been on this team, but you can't play anymore."
Unless they enroll in our program.
Again, I think they have a pathway to do that, and I, I think they, you put a lot of, a lot of thought into this, and it looks really good. Thank you.
I'm really glad to think that we had this discussion about. You all had this discussion. So now we will move to the director of schools contract.
Hey, before we do that, can I cover this real fast? So, last Friday, was it Friday?
Yeah, Friday.
I know Ricky, Dr. Holman, and I, Steve Mosley met with the architect. So just a quick update on the building program. This smaller, you might need a magnifying glass to read the font size there, but those are just some notes that come out of that. So just to kinda highlight it real quick, the sewer systems at all three schools, it's not gonna be an issue with the building program. We can tie in the sewers, but really gotta look at the future of those sewer systems. So, Rickman, we've got the land there if we need to, to possibly add a few, extra fill line. I did contact Eric Ramsey with the city about asking what it would cost to run the extra mile and a half from Fitzgerald home down for us to connect the city sewer. Haven't heard back yet, so-
It was two million dollars in two thousand twenty-two.
So how much?
Two million dollars.
To run a mile and a half?
Twenty-two.
Okay.
Because we were looking at trying to do that with the county, buying that land and selling, making enough money to pay for the sewer, so that whole field could be used to build on. Right now, you can't build nothing in that field, because it's all sewer. If you'd had city sewer down there, it would, it's probably more than that now, I'm sure.
Okay. That's a good thought to have, though, but, I mean, they told us that there's not gonna be an issue right now with the building and tying in it, but for future growth, we're probably gonna have issues at all three, so we need to be thinking about doing some things at all three of them, like Hillam.
Hillam, that's gonna be-
We're kinda landlocked there, unless we buy land across the street. I know Steve Mosley did recommend there's a section of land that we own. If you're walking around the track, the wooded area, that's got a lot of wild oaks out there, hey, do we, you know, contract somebody out to split fifty-fifty and let them log that? Half of it will come back to us, the other half go to them, that way it opens up land in the future for possible fill line. Allen's is pretty much landlocked. They did give us some information on the land in the back next to the gymnasium, about who owns that, kinda contact, and kinda get some information, but, like I said, no, no issues right now with the program, but something we really gotta think about in the future as far as the sewer systems. The total cost for everything, they didn't add smart boards in there, you look at Rickman's, thirty-six thousand, Hillam's thirty thousand. Then Allen's, based on our conversation and some things we wanna change to get more traffic off the road, probably an additional hundred thousand dollars of asphalt, twenty thousand for smart boards. So we've got five hundred, and I had the number wrote down there somewhere, I think five forty or five sixty-
Five fifty.
In contingency money, so knock on wood, we can use that contingency money to offset these costs for these smart boards and everything, pending nothing else goes wrong. The total cost, we said the fourteen million dollar bond and use, using about six million of fund balance, it'd be twenty. Right now, it's coming in at twenty thousand, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and if you add that extra money in there, you know, we're about three hundred thousand over what we said the cost would be, but again, if we do everything tightly and manage the project, we can use that five hundred and something thousand to offset that three hundred that we're over, so. Everything's on plan, the projected timeline, I think, is to bid out in June.
Right.
To bid out to the contractors, then in July, they can start staging the areas to kinda park, putting their materials and, hopefully, the, we can be in the schools by, the new sections by August twenty-twenty-six school year. Allen's may be a little different, depending on some things that we're trying to do with the traffic and things, but everything's still good right now. But if there's any questions, just let me know on that.
Can I ask something? With the innovative school model grant, three of the schools that are getting new rooms are wanting to buy out buildings, greenhouses, things like that for their students. They're really needing to know where things are gonna be, like the building, where the staging areas are gonna be, so they know where to put these things. They don't wanna set up a greenhouse and then have to move it because of staging, so-
The principals got copies of all the-
All the drawings?
The drawings at the meeting Friday, so they know exactly where everything's going.
The staging areas as well?
Well, the staging areas, we don't know. We won't know until the contractor, it's bidded out. But they can probably give a good idea of where it won't be staged. I mean, you look at Rickman School, everything's gonna be in the back part, by the, between the gym, closer to the gym is where that section's gonna be. Then Hillam is gonna be part of the current employee parking lot right behind the left side of the school. Then Allen's, there's probably not much room there, but it's gonna be right behind where the cafeteria is and run adjacent to where I think the higher grades are at back there. And then, it'll take a section of that basketball court in the back, so they don't have much room out there, but they do have that big lot up there with a gravel walkway on it. I mean, that's a little bit away from the school, but, but they've got the drawings and they probably can get, but we won't know the staging area until whoever gets the bid kinda comes in and says that, so.
I know, like, it's the height of the field, grouse or under, where the sewer system is, only height it's used for sewer. The other height back there towards Brandon Winningham, there's no sewer lines on it.
But, but they've got the copy of the drawings, and the next meeting we'll have, I don't know the time, but I'll have Dr. Holman to copy you on it, you can sit in too, so.
I see that there's no money included for playground relocations?
No, the only thing is just relocating the playground, so I'll get with Mr. Mosley on that. I think at Rickman, there's some swing sets and things that may need to be moved, it's-
Basketball-
Kinda basketball court. Allen's, the swing set and the basketball court. And Hillam, there, there's nothing affected there, because they can fix that, they're not gonna touch the track area. The backside of the track, they will touch, but they're gonna kinda shorten it and kinda make, redo asphalt around it to make a full track. But that's something we'll get with Steve on, and I think his team can handle that, so.
Yeah, 'cause the main thing that, when we look at these and we talk about spending that, and then six million dollars coming out of fund balance, thing that comes to mind is where we got the letter from the state saying that the five hundred thousand dollars in S R V's was froze and taken back, and we're gonna have to come up with that money to cover those expenses. Looking forward into the future, I'm worried about what, what more may happen, that the state may not get funding on this or that, and it may not get passed along to us, so. That's one thing that we definitely need to be looking at and thinking about if we go into the future.
I think Shirley volunteered to go move some of it too, so.
Yeah, there you go, Shirley.
Right, what about on the, on Rickman? I mean, it's twelve, I mean, we're doing ten at Hillam. And Hillam's numbers ain't really, I mean, what I, what I'm getting at, Rickman has grown probably more than any school. And I'm talking about twelve, is twelve enough?
What we decided to do, we had that conversation, is we're gonna bid out twelve, but we're gonna have a, an amendment for fourteen. Uh, that way, they're gonna give us a cost for twelve, then they're gonna give us a cost for fourteen. We can award them the twelve, and if we know that we've got enough savings to add the other two, or if we decide we wanna add the other two, we can add two more up there.
Would this Hillam have the number of students, extra to do?
Ten, I think. I thought the one I looked at last enrollment at Rickman had, was, was flat for the last three years.
But, I mean, over the last twenty years, out of all the schools,
Yeah.
Rickman, it's the last building program, was probably overcrowded when they moved in. My point is, is that gonna be enough for the, you know, the next twenty years?
Seven oh four or five right now, something like that.
Yeah.
It could ever take one or two.
Yeah, we, we talked about Rickman at extensive, I mean, based on the cost right now, twelve is where we are, we're gonna put an amendment in for fourteen, if we can add two more, I mean, we hope. I know what you're saying, I mean, but financially, we just can't add two more.
What I'm saying is, I mean, it's, Hillam need ten?
Based on the lo- the wall we did, they need ten.
They need ten, yes.
I mean, they're, they're doing RTI in the locker rooms.
No, they've been doing that.
And they're gonna lose one from the construction, because the, one of the doors that goes into the new area is gonna take half of a classroom, so they're actually gonna lose one, so they're really only gaining nine.
What about the parking? I mean, where the teachers gonna park? Is that-
Well, we, we are gonna expand the parking, it's gonna be a little further away, but we're gonna keep our current parking section. Then there's gonna be a parking expansion there. Ideally, we'd like to let it down the road, if there's some land across the street, then, you know, that'd be perfect, but we'll have to figure that out, so.
We're actually losing one height of a classroom at Rickman, but they're gonna turn it into a band room.
They're gonna turn it into a band room, yeah, so.
We need to come up with another two.
But, but, yeah, I mean, Hillam, to me, I, I know, I know Rickman's grown the most, but when we did the wall, it was more surprising to me than probably even the other ones, or where they're having classes at, so.
I think in the last building plan, the one that was two thousand, they probably needed three or four more, like especially at different rooms, but there just wasn't enough money in the budget, so they probably didn't get enough in the two thousand.
Yeah.
And now they've used every room that they had, even the boiler room got turned into the teachers.
I mean, that's what I was, that was the point I was making, when they done the last building program, it was too small when we moved in. There's no sense in doing one right now, it's too small, 'cause we know we're not gonna be able to do it again for twenty more years, probably. So it needs to be big enough, but if we gotta go ask the county for money, or what, I mean?
Yeah, and when we did the numbers, and we, we added, like, what, two or three extra classrooms on to those, so.
Yeah.
I mean, like, Rickman don't need the full twelve right now, but we anticipated some growth there, so.
And you've got to keep in mind too, that our enrollment numbers, if I'm no mistake, then have decreased from three thousand to twenty-eight something?
They're homeschooling.
Twenty-seven something.
Is that a lot of that at high school, though?
Every person. Twenty-seven hundred something now. But it's moving forward, that's a good thing, I feel the program's moving forward.
So we'll let the contracts in June?
They'll bid them in June.
And he said they put up the, the contracts, whoever got the contract would come in and put up the fence in to keep the kids away from it, all that being put away.
Staging areas, yeah.
Staging there before school started, and would be completed, that hopefully, in one year.
Yeah, by August twenty-twenty-six, we would be in them.
Twenty-six school years.
That's good.
Be pretty quick. It goes like that.
The best way to play is-
We hope it goes like that, we want it to go like that.
Alright, we'll move into the director's contract.
I had to say something in the work session about, I had some people in the system that were not getting that bonus. I, I told the director, but it is just for, you have to be a classroom teacher. I meant, if you go in every day for speech, or you go in every day for intervention, or gifted, things like that, the bonus is not for them. It defines classroom teachers. And I heard some school systems had paid everybody, but that's not us, we already, I mean, that's a lot of money, I would think. I don't know, but I had some people ask, so I promised I would bring it up, 'cause they also didn't get the reward school money that went to everybody, so. I'm not far against it, but they all got it, just you have to have classroom, with lots of desks and you have to stay there all day.
I think the state legislation could-
That's the way the state, that's the way the state defined it, they checked on it.
Definitely, they got it right, just like they did with other legislation they done, they wouldn't write either, so.
Yeah.
Let's take us a five-minute break before we go on this work session. We may be in here for a thirty minutes, my bigger for five minutes.
Take a bathroom?
Is it gonna get dark?
It's already dark.
Alright. Melissa, do you wanna take a break and call back?
She's calling.
Uh, if I'm not able to get one back there, I'm not sure, but if not, I would hesitate.
Okay.
Okay.